All right. Good morning, everybody. It is nine o'clock. We will call the meeting of the Cottington County Commission to order. Today is Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have Commissioner McElhenney.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner McElhenney. Please remember to silence your cell phones, turn them on vibration so they do not disrupt the course of the meeting here this morning. Call for public comment can be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or eight eight two six two nine seven. Item number three is any conflict of interest items.
No.
None reported. Action to approve the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five agenda.
I'll second that.
Move by Gable, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Action to approve the February eleventh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Twenty-five minutes. Motion by McElhenney, second by Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six that moves us down to the opening of annual bids for highway supplies and weed chemicals and possible action toward those bids. We'll get Randy up here from the Highway Department.
Morning Randy. Morning Randy. Punch a button and put your mic on.
Good morning, all.
Morning.
You'll have to forgive me because this is going to be a lengthy process, so I apologize to everybody in the audience. I've got updated sheets. I believe you have the one from last year.
Yeah.
This is a breakdown if you want to use these as instead. Are they different than last year? They are. There's a little addition. Oh, I'm sorry. Looking sideways through my glasses. Thank you. Yes, no. Running out of space here. Right, I believe already. Okay, we're going to start with concrete pipe. Our first one is from Rinker. Rinker, R I N K E R, out of Rapid City. And our first one is twenty-four foot. That's eight hundred and thirty-eight, forty-nine. Eight hundred, thirty-eight, forty-nine.
That's per foot.
Per foot. Next is thirty-six inch. Price on that is fifteen, forty-two, seventy. And then lastly is sixty inch. And that is two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five, sixty-two. And there we go to Chemcast.
You're like you did the last time, spell that out for us.
Chemcast is C E M C A S T. And they're out of Hartford.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And starting with the twenty-four inch. Price per is six hundred and twenty, twenty-two. For the thirty-six inch, it's one thousand fourteen, thirty-seven. And for the sixty inch. It is two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine, fifty-eight.
We have power of things.
I'm sorry.
Bond with them.
Yeah, bid bond.
Yes.
Radio, I want to just clarify something. Was this last year's numbers? So these numbers that we have from last year are way different than the ones that you're reporting to us today. Like for the twenty-four foot was fifty-three, seventy-two, fifty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. This year it's eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So we need to make sure we're.
Okay, I'm looking at the CL three. Are there different columns on there? No, it's it's the class three or the class two round pipe.
Is there anyone from Rinker here?
I'm from Subcash. You sure that is by a piece of pipe, eight foot pipe? Is how it's.
Section of pipe. No, it's just referring to end section.
Really with the per foot price or the really with the per foot price, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. You are correct.
Per foot.
Per foot. My apologies.
Okay. So let's start over with Rinker. It's not eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Nope, that's my bad.
Get in the culvert business. Oh, you're good line. Yeah. You only wanted six inches, right?
Yeah. All right. So let's back up and let's just start with Rinker again.
My bad.
Twenty-four inch.
Back to Rinker for twenty-four inch, forty-two, eighty-seven.
Okay.
Is that closer now?
Yes.
All right.
That's all better.
Forty-two, eighty-seven. My apologies. Thirty-six inch. All right. Thirty-six inches, seventy-eight, seventy-three. And the sixty inches, two oh nine, ninety-eight.
It's not counting this ring. Don't get excited.
Yeah, the Chemcast is coming up with that larger amount also on its selling as a unit price. We didn't divide it up like what? They did that. So is that sold as a what length unit?
What's that?
For your unit price for your flare pipe?
He's looking for the per foot price.
Per foot.
He's looking for the perfect price of your bid.
What's one typical unit? Eight foot, ten foot.
I think I located it. Okay. Now we're back on track. Twenty-four inch from Chemcast is fifty-six, ninety-eight. Thirty-six inch is one hundred and eleven, forty-seven. And for the sixty inch is three hundred and eleven, twenty-seven. Then moving on to the pre-stressed bridge deck. Back to Rinker. All right. For the pre-stressed bridge deck from Rinker to the forty foot. Would be seven thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars. For the fifty foot. Would be ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-four. We'll go to Chemcast. I am not seeing a bid from them. So just from Rinker. Moving on to concrete box culverts.
Just so everyone knows when we when we open these and we read these. Every one of them is different. So how they're formatted and everything else, that's why it takes so long to go through these is because everybody has a different way of doing them. So I want to make sure that we get the right information out there.
Unfortunately, Rinker includes a ream of paper here. So it takes a little longer to decipher it. Okay, for the concrete box culverts from Rinker. The eight by eight is seven hundred and eighty dollars even. The ten by ten is nine hundred and sixty-five even. Go to Rinker, excuse me, Chemcast, I apologize. Chemcast for the eight by eight is one thousand sixty-six, sixty-two. The ten by ten is twenty-seven, seven sixteen oh six. Twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen oh six.
Doesn't sound right.
That's an end section. My apologies once again. Let's go with one thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight seventy-three. Going forward, we have to have them break it down a little more concise. That's correct. It's way too confusing otherwise.
Corrugated metal pipe.
Corrugated metal pipe. Normally we go with Beetle County's bid. I haven't received that yet. It's from True North. Out of Huron, so I will have to get back to you next week with that. Same thing with the bridge lumber. We purchase all that through them and we've done that previous years.
Do we have any other bids?
No.
Did we receive any other bids for those?
Okay. Next we move on to diesel fuel. Now we've got three bids. First one is from Cole out of Madison, C O L E. And this is for dyed diesel number two, excuse me. This is for in town. This is two dollars forty-one, seventy-five.
Say that again.
Two dollars, forty-one cents, point seven five. Now it goes on to say dyed number one is eight cents a gallon above the Sioux Falls unbranded rack average. So if that is eight cents above the two point four one. That is going to make it two dollars and forty-nine cents, point seven five. Yes, please.
I just, that would be off the state's system.
Okay.
And the price changes daily along the market. And then the way they figure the price is they take the average price out of the Sioux Falls terminal. So we'll use that and then add eight cents to that.
Okay, so whatever it is, plus eight cents.
Yeah. Price would stay current with whatever the market's doing. It protects, it protects you guys and us from large market spikes since we can't lock on the price.
All right. Thank you. As long as I have them open, we're going to move down to gas hall right away. The unleaded ten percent, he's got two forty-nine, point five zero. He's got no bid on the twenty percent or the thirty percent or the E eighty-five. Nothing. Well, I'm sorry. I apologize. That's right, the crease here. Fifteen cents more per gallon for small deliveries to the outline shops. So that's going to bring it to two sixty-four seventy-five.
That fluctuates. No, that's set.
Next bid is from Sioux Valley. They've got Senex Fieldmaster Premium Diesel at two sixty-eight, even. They've got a dyed number two premium on here, but I know from past experiences that does not meet our criteria, so I'm going to skip that. The dyed number one premium is two ninety-three even.
Randy, if I can just back you up. What do you mean it doesn't meet our standards?
The standard we had set going forward or prior. It's hard to explain. It's a the criteria for the amount of chemical in it, I guess, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
Did not meet our criteria. So Rick had called last year to verify that and they said that did not meet our needs at that point.
That'd be the attitude.
Correct. Thank you.
This, Mr. Chair, one quick question. Yes, gentleman from Cole, is that delivered price? Okay.
Okay, to the outside shops. For the Fieldmaster Premium was two eighty-five, excuse me, two eighty-four. That is correct. And for the number one is three oh eight, even. Then going down to the gas hall. E ten, they had two sixty-one even. E thirty, two thirty-six even. E eighty-five, they had two twenty-two. There was no bid on E twenty.
E eighty-five, you mean? I have two thirty-six for E twenty. Is that not right?
No, that's wrong. It should be E thirty. Should be two thirty-six.
Oh, okay. Yeah. My bad.
And then a third bidder. Volant Oil, out of Baltic.
It's V O L L A N, Volant Oil. V as in Victor, I'm sorry. V O L L A N.
Correct. Number two diesel. They have listed at two fifty-five five. To the outshops. Two dollars. Eighty-two cents, point seven. Number one diesel. Two seventy-nine two. Outshops. Three oh six four. Then for E-ten, they've got two sixty-two four. E-twenty. Got two fifty-three four. For E-thirty, they've got two forty-four four. And for E-eighty-five, they've got. Two dollars, fifteen five. I'm sorry. Baltic. That is for it, for diesel fuel on gas hall. Moving on to liquid asphalt. We've got two bidders. One from Flint Hills. Out of Marshall, Minnesota. Flint Hills no longer provides the MC materials. So we would start with the AE one fifty S. And this is bid per ton, five hundred and seventy-six even. The CSS dash one H is five hundred and sixty-nine even. The CSS one H D thirty is four hundred and thirty even. And for the CSS one H D fifty, it is three thirty-three even. Then we have Jebro, which is out of Sioux City. They've got a plant in Corson.
You say that name again?
Jebro is J E B R O. Here they provide the MC seventy. And three thousand, they have two different prices, the seventy is listed at eleven forty-three. Forty-six. And the MC three thousand is listed at eight hundred ninety-eight forty-six. Then they go on to the AE one fifty S. That's seven hundred seventeen twenty-one. And then they go down to the CSS one H. Which is six hundred ninety-seven twenty-one. And that is all we have for them. From there we go to the pea gravel. We've got three bids, first one is from Northern Connaig. And they are at seven dollars and thirty-five cents per ton. Then we have LG Everest out of Sioux Falls. L G Everest is E V E R I S T. And they come in at twelve dollars and fifty-five cents per ton. And then lastly, we have Spencer. Spencer Corey's out of Spencer. I'm sorry. South Dakota.
By Mitchell.
Yeah, he's the Mitchell, yeah.
Actually, close to where there was a tornado about fifteen years ago that wiped it all out.
It's all new.
Well, what's there is pretty good, but there isn't much there at all.
Package with them, package with on a package.
See it real well.
This is still pea gravel.
And this is correct.
They have, well, the Red Rock there.
Spencer Corey's coming back at fifteen dollars even per ton. And that is it for pea gravel. Moving on to gravel crushing, we've got two bids. First one is from Brown League. Brownley comes in at, for the half inch, three fifty-eights. For the five-eighth inch, three forty-four. And for the three-quarter inch, three oh four. Next we have Rogie Excavating, Rogie is R O G G E, they're out of Marshall, Minnesota. And they put a bid in strictly for the three-quarter inch at seven fifty per ton.
Randy.
Yes.
On that, remember we talked about, you're gonna get about single tracks, not the crushing.
Correct.
It's not separate.
Right.
I'm gonna get to figure that out.
That was my understanding, that was the price from the others also. Everything included.
Okay, continue. Can have that discussion out in the hallway when we're done, okay?
And then we had asphalt patching material. We got that from Dunick. Okay, for cold mix, they've got a hundred and eighty per ton. Hot mix. For. Three-quarter inch. He's got eighty-one dollars. He's also got a price listed for half inch, eighty-four dollars. And then for half inch virgin, he's got ninety-nine dollars. They also did have a bid for pea gravel at eighteen dollars per ton. Eighteen dollars per ton, yes.
Those, those hot mixes again.
Certainly, three-quarter inch is eighty-one dollars. Half inch is eighty-four dollars, and then half inch virgin is ninety-nine dollars per ton. And that is all I have. With the fact that I do not have the steel pipe, I'd like to continue this into next week if that's all right.
Yeah. We'd like you to take those out and review them anyway, make sure everything's correct, and if you have a question for him, you can visit outside. About that, we can keep going that way, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome.
Good, pretty good, first time through, remember? It'll never get worse, or better.
Alright, so weed chemicals. Oh, Steve over here. What? Alright, let's go ahead and go to Steve with his bids now for some weed chemicals.
Looks like to me that we only got one this year, so.
Should be easy. Maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
Maybe.
One little slip.
Two, yeah, I got two, alright, good.
Okay, we will start out with, this is from Van Dees, um, Chem, or Van Dees Supply Company, they are out of Webster City, Iowa. And we will start out with the aquatic glyphosate. Um, they have a bid at, from manufacturer name is New Farm. And it is twenty dollars and seventy-five cents. Or Roundup Pro or equivalent, they have Bayer Roundup Pro concentrate. At eighteen dollars and thirty cents a gallon. Um, that'd be underneath the glyphosate, yep. Plateau or equivalent. Um, he has a bid with El Guerra Panoramic, which is a, um, generic. Ninety-six dollars and five cents. The, um, Bayer Roundup Pro concentrate. Eighteen thirty.
These are all per gallon.
Twelve, all per gallon.
Eighteen thirty-two, didn't you say?
Eighteen thirty, sorry. But I did say thirty-two.
Well, I had eighteen thirty-eight on my list, so we'll get there, what is it, eighteen thirty?
Yep, eighteen thirty.
Okay.
Eighteen thirty for the glyphosate, yep, clarification. Two forty amine. Seventeen dollars and five cents a gallon. Tordon twenty-two K. Forty-nine dollars and three cents. Non-ionic surfactant, ninety-ten. Nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Yep, non-ionic, non-I, non-Ironic. I think my wood proposal is accept all bids, being there's only one bidder, so.
That two forty, I mean, is that, is that. Delivered bulk or?
That's delivered, two hundred and fifty gallon tote. That prices per gallon, yes. That prices per gallon, yes. I do know that this is, um, that has gone up quite a bit. I've heard that some other bids out there and somebody had it has gone significant and part of that is due to, um, the embargoes. Again.
Okay, so we do have a recommendation from. Steve to accept the bids since.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by McElhaney, second by Gable, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, okay?
Do you want me to stay up or?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just have you, uh, go ahead and do that. Let's move on to seven B facility manager report, Steve.
Okay, we'll start out with the egg building. Farm show has come to a completion with a couple of incidents occurring on Thursday morning. Um, one, the wash rack plugged up causing a flood in the floor. Which a plumber had to come in and blast the sewer line. Um, my understanding is we had it was about a hundred and some feet down the lane and underneath that the. The sewer comes from the back of the barn and goes all the way north to the street, so about a hundred and some feet, it was plugged. Um, so, um, that got blasted, actually it got blasted twice. And stuff, so. Secondly, the power went out in the barn. Um, electricians got the power back up and running and will return this week to dig deeper into the root of the issue. Uh, we may have to replace the electrical panel in the hallway leading to the sale ring. Um, it, it is old, it is outdated pretty well, um, and then they found out there's some. Uh, they were getting some extra heat from one of the, um, breakers, they had replaced it, but they're still getting plenty of extra heat. So they're gonna dig into that and check it out to see. They're planning on coming today to look into that, so.
So how long was the outage?
I believe for about thirty minutes, thirty to forty minutes or so. It delayed a little bit of the show, and so we had.
Right, when there was twenty five fans, blowers.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was pretty well loaded, so.
Yeah.
Um, don't have really anything done to detention center, government building. Um, generator was put in place a couple of weeks ago. Um, startup is scheduled to be near, um, the first of June. On that, by the time they get dirt work and stuff, they're looking at maybe trying to do a power run, um, over Memorial Weekend. And so we had, that way everything here is shut down. Um, park. Online reservation system began on, um, February first. I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago, my apologies, so when it started up after midnight, um, that it didn't get up and going until after eight o'clock. Do some tech- some technical issues on, on their side. As far as of, um, for the first sixteen days, there has been a hundred and ninety three reservations made. So far at the park, um, it seems like that has caught on quite a bit. And I'm sure there's a lot of people out there that don't really know it yet, but it has picked up and caught on, so.
Did you hear any complaints about the reservation?
I haven't really heard anything yet, um, no, really nobody's emailed or called.
Yeah.
It's a learning curve, so.
Sure.
Um, I can take note, I don't know, my wife seen on Facebook that, uh, from the public opinion that, uh, Memorial Park was ranked number one. Compared to, um, to Pelican and Sandy Shores, so. I don't know, she does overall. Yep.
Number one for size.
Customer satisfaction.
I don't suppose, yeah.
Amanaties.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, she had just noticed that last night, so not for sure, I didn't dig into it and check it, so.
Maybe it was for mosquito.
And we haven't sprayed out there for, for a while, if anything's been done as a city. All right. In the weed department, um, I worked at, um, weed booths at Sioux Falls and the Watertown Farm Show. Um. That both days that I attended each one, um, I thought there was pretty good turnout for each. So we had. Uh, Grant County Weed Supervisor and I gave a praise- presentation last week at the Grassland School. On noxious weed control and the state statute law, weed laws in South Dakota. And so we had, um. Uh, there was probably roughly, I'm gonna have to say at least seventy five to eighty, um, people there. As far as most of them were government entity, but there was a dozen farmers that attended that also, so.
Right.
Um, it was a good thing for us to talk about a little bit, because there's always been issues with some government entities of, of control. And just to let them know what laws there are and what they can, what, what can be taken care of on that, um, so.
Game fishing parks.
Well, there's game fish, I'm gonna have to tell you, I probably would have to turn around, rank some of the national ones to be a little worse than, than the game fish. Oh, yeah. So. Um. I'll be a weed board member and I will be attending the South Dakota Weed and Pest Conference this week, which I plan on being, leaving in another couple of hours, so. And a reminder of the annual weed board meeting and towns and township meeting that is set for Thursday, March thirteenth at six P M. With supper followed by the meetings. And if you wanna have a comment about mosquitoes, I don't think they're out in this cold weather.
If they are, there's nothing, that's gonna kill them.
No, that's all I have so far, so.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Okay.
I had, I was out to farm show every day last weekend and, uh, I, I, you know, the parking situation is very good. I just really appreciate all those, uh, goofnap trailers and trucks down at the very south end and. It just makes for easy access if there's a fire or an ambulance needed or something like that. And I was, I was very, I was impressed.
Yeah.
We did have one issue with, uh, handicap parking. Uh, they thought that the handicap parking was in the loading and unloading zone and, uh. We went, we had some discussion about that.
Yep.
It, it was resolved.
Yes.
Good. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Get you copy.
All right, let's get Randy back up here and. The highway department. Morning again.
Randy, exactly where's that culvert at? I, I know it's on, uh, what street? Uh, County Road nine one, but as a, as a qualified, where's the fine string on that?
Um, just, just straight north of State Highway twenty, within the first eighth of a mile.
Straight north of Highway twenty, okay?
State Highway twenty.
State Highway twenty, yeah. All right.
So if you just go up the ice system, hop off, go east for eighth of a mile, then you go north another eighth of a mile, it's right there.
Okay, let's give your monthly report before we get to that item.
All right, Randy, so. Well. The guys and I finished our refresher, our M Shaw training, which is our mine safety training put on by Safety Benefits. Uh, because of the cold, they've been out only a couple of times having to sand or salt anything. And we've only had one single storm that's been of any consequence, so we had to remove a little bit of snow. Other than that, we've been very fortunate this winter. Going forward, it's looking like we might be done with that white stuff.
That's active, yeah, that's pretty optimistic, we'll, we'll see.
We're trying to call the mosquitoes in or mosquitoes?
I, I'll take those over that white stuff any day. All right, um, again with the cold, uh, we've been taking advantage of it. Uh, we did do some work over on Thirty First Street by the ice arena. With those culverts we have over there with the damage and whatnot that was done to it previously, we went over there and torched some of that steel off. So that hopefully come springtime, if we do have any ice moving, uh, it'll flow easier.
Great.
Again, because of the cold, we've been doing a lot of work inside at our shop, uh, we've renovated the men's room. Uh, we've also done the same thing or similar to the ladies' room. Mostly just paint and a little plumbing work. Uh, we sound insulated our compressor room, because when that kicks in, it's, it's almost deafening in there. And we did clean up our main shop and moved all of our equipment out that we could, so that we could reseal the floor in there. Turned out really nice. I know Randy had stopped in and taken a look at it halfway through the process.
Yeah, that looks really sharp.
Uh, we did receive our new tire machine, uh, we removed a bench that had been part of our previous tire. Equipment setting to make room for the tire machine. We did get it wired with the new phase converter and it's all hooked up, now we're just waiting to be trained on it. So we're gonna have a trainer come in and train all of us at the same time.
Like you said, now we're waiting for a flat tire.
No. That'll come soon enough, unfortunately. And that was all I had.
Okay. Any questions about the monthly report? Now, we'll move on to number eight, action to approve quote for culvert project in County Road nine dash one.
All right, again, this is, um, just a culvert for culvert replacement. That's on a four hundred and fifty East Avenue, which is our County Road nine one. And again, that's just north of State twenty, within an eighth of a mile. Um, we only sent this out. To one individual and he came back with a quote of sixty eight thousand, four hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty seven cents.
Is that in our packet?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's from Deutsch.
That is correct, yes.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Schwer, any discussion?
Okay, if I, my memory is sort of very right, and I.
There it is.
The, uh, location of that, you, you know, up in that area, there's a lot of runoff. And it's pretty hilly. And, uh, that's, I mean, it's, it's nice to have hills so the water runs and doesn't pond up.
Yes.
But it runs good there.
It does.
It's pretty, uh, pretty rigid.
Yes. And these culverts were a little narrow, so kept the road narrow up, so we are gonna widen it, so it's gonna improve traffic travel there also.
Right, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. All right, let's move on to number nine, action to approve abatement applications.
Yes, we have three of those in your packet. Uh, the first one is, um, and two of these had to go to the city because they are within the city limits. The first one is on twelve oh one First Avenue Northeast, it, and the amount abated is three hundred seventy eight dollars and forty two cents. And the reason being, it was purchased by a tax exempt entity and should have had two months, uh, taxes abated, so that was the first one. The second one, the amount, uh, to be abated is one thousand five fifty seven oh six. And this property qualifies for an assessment program, but it was missed. And the third one is, uh, record number two one six nine six, and the amount to be baited is two thousand two hundred twenty seven dollars and sixty four cents. And that reason is the property is currently centrally assess, assessed through the state.
For motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable, any discussion on those abatements? None, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Action to approve claims for payments, Brenda.
Yes, you have that in your, must be laying over to the side maybe. Um, we had a few claims come in that we need to take care of before our next monthly, um, claim payment. And the total amount is thirty five thousand, a hundred nine dollars and twenty cents. We also have the nine one one, but we can handle that separate.
We will take that separate until I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney, discussion. I see we're paying astrophysics. That's pretty close.
That's the, uh, that I believe that it's the, uh, X-ray machine that's what's created it.
It is, okay.
It's a warrant, yeah, maintenance.
Gotcha, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so the nine one one charges, it will be paid to the city of Watertown for the month of January are in the amount of thirty eight thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and fifty nine cents.
And I will excuse myself from this.
Motion approved.
Move by Johnson, second by Gable, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Action to approve automatic budget supplements.
I do have, uh, one of those, it is to the state's attorney budget in the amount of two hundred thirty seven thousand dollars, which is the amount that we, uh. Remitted to the Boys and Girls Club for the J J R I, I just need to supplement her budget with those.
Move to approve, sir.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Personnel changes, item number twelve. We have any of those?
Yes, you have that in your package. So, um, it is for Cindy Fellmeyer to, uh, move over to the treasurer's office of administrative support. Um, she'll start at step twelve, twenty six sixty six on April first, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion by Johnson, second by Gable, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Action to approve travel requests.
There are none.
No travel requests. Number fourteen, public notices, a possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at this week. Anybody have anything? No heat?
That was supposed, that was supposed to be tomorrow.
Hmm.
So it changed it, I, I saw.
Are they gonna reschedule that, do you know, or just cancel?
I think they were gonna do something after the session back there.
Okay.
I don't think they can reschedule the day, because it's pretty well full.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
It, it's a ways out, but, uh, I don't know how many you, I just would remind you, we have that pipeline safety program and I've attended it. Every year for several years now, and it, uh, with all the, all the goings on about pipelines, it's. Good to show up at that, amazing, you'll be amazed at how many pipelines we have in. The city limits, unbelievable.
Yeah, it's great information, they do a good job of educating the public on the safety and. Who to call and when to call and everything else, so thank you, Commissioner Johnson for bringing that up. There is also a nine one one meeting, uh, this week, a couple of you may be at that as well on Thursday, so. All right, let's move on to old business, anything for fifteen old business? Sixteen new business? Anybody have anything for new business?
Design team or the jail, certain, the teams. If someone to commit, we could do, to avoid form problems, or one commissioner wanted to, and then watch, you could do that, so.
What time is that?
One.
One o'clock. Right, any?
Just let me know, I can.
Anything for the open, public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? See, none, commissioner comments?
Mr. Chair, we do have a, I had zoning meeting this, this afternoon or at twelve thirty today. And I know that it's published, but I just thought it's some of you are in town in Webster City, the agenda isn't very long, short.
Where's that at, Commissioner?
At the, uh, extension center.
Extension Center, okay, twelve thirty this afternoon. Right, any more comments from commissioners? Now, we do have a need to go into executive session, we do anticipate taking action following executive session today.
Um, that'd be number one.
So discussion of personnel issues, I believe.
We do it, action is anticipated.
Well, Sarah.
Okay. All right, possible action to be taken afterwards. Yeah.
I make a motion.
Okay, motion by Gable.
I did that.
Second by Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we are into executive session, thank you, everyone.
You want us, just, we can leave the zoom running, just, yes, we have to come back on.